Thank you, everybody, for joining. This is our regular session of the Mayor Council, City of Bisbee, County Co-Chief, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at seven oh four P. M. in our council chambers. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Louis Pollak.
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Joanie Giacominno is excused, but she may come in a little later. Councilmember Frank Davis is excused. Mayor Ken Budge.
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns.
Here.
Councilmember Mel Sued.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Stephen Pocken, city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Joelle Anders, personnel director, Jesus Harrow, public works director, Alberti Chava, police chief, Jim Richardson, acting fire chief, and John Gaylord is our city attorney tonight.
Thank you. For a moment of silence tonight, I want us to take a moment to remember our loved ones and somebody else that Colin Powell, who's just passed, I mean, to me, I always thought highly of him, but if that's not who you would want to think about, think about other ones that have lost through the COVID problems, so just take a moment, thank you. Thank you. We'll do the fight of the legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the government for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So for tonight, I have a couple of proclamations and one announcement I would like to give a few minutes, personal privilege to our public, um, or, or, yeah, to Joelle, who would like to speak to us, our personnel director, for a ten-year award for one of our lovely employees that works in our public works department. Joelle, we got the ten-year award now, I think that's pretty amiable.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening, we have Lorena Valdez, who has been the administrative assistant in the public works department since October eighteenth, two thousand and eleven, um, and we wanted to just take a moment and recognize her. Additionally, we have another employee in the finance department, Angelica Coronado. She has been with the City of Bisbee for over twenty years, but had a small break in service, um, less than six months, so while she doesn't get a longevity award or, you know, acknowledgement, I at least wanted to say thank you so much for her continued service. And I'm gonna let Mr. Harrow say something about Lorena. Thank you.
I don't think you can say enough.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You're absolutely right. Um, I don't know that I can say enough about Lorena. Um, Lorena, for the most part, is the glue that holds public works department together. Um, she came to us, uh, from, uh, the, uh, prior to that, from, she was working at a local insurance company, and prior to that, she worked for thirteen years with Department, uh, the Department of Corrections, sorry. Um, she started here abs- actually as a temporary employee for three months in the clerk's department, and, um, from the start, her work was acknowledged because, um, she was called back to work permanently for us. Uh, she started as the executive, executive secretary and is now an administrative assistant. Um, as you all may know, and I'm sure you do, is that she runs the Festival of Lights. She's done so for a number of years. Um, she serves, she runs our portion of the Bisbee bus. Um, she asked me not to say that because she doesn't want to do it, but it's a, it's work that she does, and she does it, she, and, and, and she does it, she does it because that's what she is, is she's the person that serves the City of Bisbee. Um, she also is the coordinator of our interns that come from the Professional Youth Quest Program, so all those interns, if you, if you all come into our office and see them, um, she coordinates them. Um, again, I'm, I'm proud to acknowledge that Lorena has served the City of Bisbee for ten years and definitely grateful. Thank you.
Thank you. Longevity is, is a hallmark of our city, and I appreciate all the employees. So, for a couple of proclamations tonight, this one is called the City and Towns Week two thousand and twenty-one, um, comes to us from the leading cities and towns, whereas assistants of Bisbee rely on the city to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas the cities and towns of Arizona also provide services and programs to enhance the quality of life for residents, such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs, and whereas it is important for Bisbee to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs to our citizens that have come to expect in our community, and whereas it is one of the responsibility of Bisbee officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means, and whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together, work together to ensure that services provided by Bisbee can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life in our community. It is therefore that I be that I resolve that I, Ken Budge, Mayor, City of Bisbee, do hereby proclaim October seventeenth to the twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one to be Cities and Towns Week of two thousand and twenty-one, and join the leading cities and towns and fellow municipalities across the state. Second one will be the Extra Mile Day. This kind of coincides with this, and I think it, it, it comes together quite well, and this one is whereas the City of Bisbee is a community which acknowledges that the special uh, fire exists within the community when its individual citizens collectively go the extra mile in personnel effort, volunteerism, and service, and whereas the City of Bisbee is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to this community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and in total effort, commitment, and the conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community, and whereas the City of Bisbee is a community which to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within its community go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of our community. And finally, whereas the City of Bisbee acknowledges the mission of Extra Mile America to create five hundred and fifty extra mile cities in America, it is proud to support Extra Mile Day, which is November first, two thousand and twenty-one. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Ken Budge, Mayor of the City of Bisbee, do hereby proclaim November first, two thousand and twenty-one to be Extra Mile Day. I urge, I urge each individual in the community to take time on this day to not only go the extra mile in his or her own life, but also acknowledge all those who are inspirational in their efforts and commitment to make their organization, families, community, country, and world a better place. Thank you. And that will conclude my announcements, and proclamations will move on, and we have called the public. Uh, Michael, let's see, there's one person signed up. Take your, uh, hats.
My name is Mike Adlin. I am, uh, the owner of the Old American Legion in downtown Bisbee, and just wanted to formally introduce myself to you guys, coming at that opportunity to meet. Um, we're looking forward, hopefully, in the springtime to be opening up the Legion Heritage Bar and Grill and the FNG Brewing Company. I'm looking forward to giving back to Bisbee and helping Bisbee and really being a part of history, and I'm also looking forward to moving here, hopefully sooner than later in the next couple of months, and I hope that any of you guys want to come on down and visit the building and see, it's a, it's really something pretty special historically. It's been in Bisbee with the American Legion since nineteen seventeen, so there's been a lot of, uh, grandfathers, grandmothers, kids, family members that walk through those doors, and it's a pretty special place, and we're looking forward to being a part of the community. So, thank you very much, and I hope to see you guys soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, moving on to general business, we'll move into item one, which is accounts payable. We have a motion.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents, subject to availability of funds.
Second?
Have a motion, a second. Do we have questions?
I have one.
Okay, now.
On page nine, um, the second to last, on the, uh, it says municipal sanitation, housing, but it's to the treasure for tipping fees, is that for a cleanup for one property or multiple?
That's, um, that's the whole citywide, um, cost for, for dumping the trash at the county landfill.
Oh, so it's not for the housing issue?
No, no, I, I don't, I don't know what the rest of that was gonna say, but I think it's the household waste maybe is what, what it says.
Okay, yeah, 'cause it just has house. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
We need to do landscaping, so. Uh, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead, uh.
I'll be making a statement and maybe a question. I know this is on the, the contract we have with Doc Cat Mouse Media. Um, I know this is a contract we have with this entity, but, uh, I believe it's something that we have to look at and see, because, to be honest with you, I mean, um, being in downtown Bisbee and dealing with, uh, tourists, a simple thing, we can have like a brochure or a map of our, uh, visitors, and I believe it's something that we need to look at. I'm not questioning the expense, because I know it's budgeted, but, and I know we've spoken about this, and I know Steve is looking at some, uh, uh, ultimate, uh, way to go about this, uh, advertising, and so it's something that I just want to bring up, and hopefully, maybe if you wanna make any statement or comment, or you're going with this, I'd appreciate that.
Later.
Okay.
Anything else? Seeing, uh, we have a motion and a second to approve accounts payable in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars and seventy-three cents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes. Five, zero, unanimous. All right, moving on to item two, this is approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we have a, uh, possible appointment of one person to the designer review board, we have a park permit, and three liquor licenses. Does anybody have anyone they would like to call? Seeing now, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed on?
I move that we approve the consent agenda, items A through E.
Second?
Motion and a second to approve consent agenda as listed here. Can I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes unanimous, five, zero. Looks like we don't have any old business, so we'll move on to item three, which is new business. This is a public hearing and discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O slash twenty-one dash fifteen to rezone APM one oh two dash sixteen dash oh seven four and one oh two dash sixteen dash one twenty-six and one oh two dash sixteen dash oh seventy-nine C. This, these parcels are located at one oh oh eight West Highway ninety-two. These are owned by Mr. Todd Conklin, and the request here is to approve the zoning change from a C one to a C four. Mr. Taylor, our new guy that's gonna present to us, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, this is a request, uh, for a zoning change for the property of, at ten oh eight Highway ninety-two from, uh, C one, which is the most restrictive commercial zone, to C four, which is the least restrictive, and this application was unanimously approved on September sixteenth, nine, uh, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it is for, uh, the citizen Todd Conklin.
All right, questions from council? Seems pretty straightforward, it's fairly commercial area, this is moving it up to the highest level, which is a C one, correct?
Uh, it's a C four, is the, is the most, uh, uh, flexible level.
Yes, that's what I meant to say. C one to C four. Any other? Oh, go ahead, yep.
Uh, so going from C one to C four, I mean, I'm not very knowledgeable on the, on the rules yet, but when you, you go to flexible, the most flexible, and I, from what I read, Mr. Todd is gonna use this to store some of his, uh, equipment.
Correct.
My question is, can he later on, by changing, changing it to C four, can he go and put something else with it that maybe not pertaining to equipments, maybe can go, go further and maybe build a shopping center?
Well, I, I do think the land is, the land size would restrict that, but yes, he could, could use any, uh, use within C four. Um, he is going to build a building on it for his, uh, his, uh, company.
Okay. So, but with no restriction, I mean, we are, we are approving this with no, with no saying, well.
No stipulation against use? No, it would, it would be C four and anything within that, uh, classification.
Would be permanent. Okay.
Just, I have a clarification here.
Sure.
But the neighboring property is also a C four, correct?
Not the direct of butter, but there is C four on, uh, ninety-two in that area.
Across the highway.
Yes, across, and then I believe a little ways down, maybe eighty-five mile down.
Can I do a follow-up on this?
Sure, bet.
Um, so, let's say someone else comes in later, and once this, uh, rezoning, would this, would this set the precedent?
Someone else wants it within the neighborhood?
Yeah, yeah, to, to also.
Uh, well, I think that it strengthens what I think is, and this is the opinion of the city planner, it strengthens what seems to be the direction that that neighborhood is going in. It's becoming a large shopping, uh, uh, not, uh, a retail, not like a downtown, it's a, you know, there's uses that have, you know, truck storage and, and material storage and, uh, gas stations, things like that. So, I think that if this was a, a domino effect that you might be thinking of, I don't think that would be against the plan for that portion.
That would still be okay for us.
Yeah, I think so.
Overall, my feeling is this abuts ninety-two, which is the main thoroughfare, and, and if, if we're gonna have commercial property, that would be, seems like the most reasonable, doesn't inflict into any residential necessarily.
Correct.
So.
There is residential in, in that area, but this wouldn't be directly.
We have a direct access off ninety-two for this, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, you have, you have, uh, other uses like a cemetery, and, uh, there's a lot of other sort of industrial uses on that, on that road.
All right. Is there a motion out there?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-one dash fifteen to rezone APM one oh two dash sixteen dash zero seven four and one oh two dash sixteen dash one twenty-six and one oh two dash sixteen dash zero seven nine C at, uh, one zero zero eight Highway ninety-two, owned by Mr. Todd Conklin, from C one to C four.
Second? A motion and a second to approve item number three. I'm being lazy. Can I have a vote, please?
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimous, thank you. This is item number four. This is a discussion of possible approval to make repairs to a nineteen eighty-four Peterbilt dump truck. Public Works.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, yes, you did hear that right, that we are asking to have repairs done to a nineteen eighty-four Peterbilt dump truck. Um, we, essentially, what has happened is the drivetrain on that has failed, the transmission has failed on it, um, we did transport that over to Rush Truck Center, and they have given us an estimate to make repairs to that vehicle. The, to make the repairs, all of them that they recommend was over twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, we felt that putting that much resource into a nineteen eighty-four, um, vehicle was probably not prudent, so we have brought forth to you is to make repairs so that we can use this vehicle, um, for this year. Um, so that is a six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty-three cents to repair the transmission, we'll be able to use that, and hopefully, we can add this into the, uh, budgeting process to maybe replace this vehicle for the next budget year, uh, but the vehicle, if we repair the transmission, uh, will, will serve us for the rest of the year, and, uh, be, uh, happy to answer any questions you want.
Questions, go ahead, Louis. Yes, uh, Mr. Harrow, do you have a cost on a new vehicle?
Excuse me, yes, uh, we've been looking at a few, um, the, the reason we brought this repair to you all is a, a new dump truck, um, that, the size that would serve us, uh, is probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We were looking at some used ones, um, again, the, that would, the size that would serve our purpose, we can get those between fifty and eighty thousand dollars, so I, I feel confident that we can get a very nice, um, used vehicle in the future, uh, but seeing how, uh, the public works department has probably exhausted all of our vehicle purchases for this year, we thought that it'd be, uh, best to come with you for, with this repair.
Thank you. Any others?
Okay, so you're saying that this will get us to the end of the year? I'm hoping you mean the end of next year.
Correct, yes, it, it, it'll, it'll.
Give us a year, yeah.
It'll, it'll, it'll still work, I mean, just keep in mind, this isn't the nineteen eighty-four vehicle, so, uh, we, we definitely something we need to keep in the back of our mind, this is one that needs to get replaced.
Not one out of seven, just the blue one?
The blue one, it is, it is.
I know by the color.
It is, it is all blue.
Okay. That's what I was wanting. Go ahead, Mel.
Will there be any warranty on this, uh, amount? I mean, six thousand dollars is, uh, that's a lot of money. Are they gonna give you any guarantee on?
I, you know, I, I didn't look at the actual warranty of, I, but I, I'm fairly confident that the repair that they do will have a year warranty, this, this is fairly standard, um, but really, that's what we're looking forward to getting.
We'll make sure that we have that.
Yes.
So, no one, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I just got one more question.
Oh, sure.
Okay, so when you were looking at, um, the used vehicles, are you looking at just state contracts, are you looking through the Ritchie Brothers, or where are you looking?
We, we did an online search through all kinds of state contracts, through, um, different, uh, government, um, bidding, those types of things, so we've, we've looked at a few different places. Um, again, obviously, we've, we asked, um, Rush Truck Centers if they had any, and they provided us with a few different, um, prices again, um, so we definitely have, have looked at a few, but just, I just felt that it was appropriate to, to bring this repair rather than come and ask for a, a, a replacement of a ten times the amount.
Possible.
One more?
Just last one. I know, uh, Steve will like this one, so I'm gonna ask him. Is this budgeted for?
Yes.
Is there money, you have money for this?
Yeah, absolutely, we do, uh, we have, we did, this is in our, in our budget, um, we will have a balance in that line item, if approved, of, uh, five thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars and forty-nine cents left in that line item. So, yes, it is, it's, that is something that we have in our budget.
Okay.
All right, any other? Have a motion.
I move to approve the Rush Truck Center repair estimate for the nineteen eighty-four Peterbilt dump truck.
A second.
A motion, a second, to approve the repair estimate for the nineteen eighty-four Peterbilt dump truck, in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and forty-three cents. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes, unanimous, now six here. Alrighty. We're moving on to this, so the item number five, this is a discussion of possible approval of the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-one dash sixteen, authorizing and ratifying the acquisition of certain real property located at number one Hillcrest Drive. Long time coming, and I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, uh, and good evening, everyone. Um, this item is, uh, transfer of ownership of the former Hillcrest Apartments Building, uh, from Southeast Arizona Renovations to, um, the City of Bisbee. Uh, this is the last item in a sequence of events that occurs when we acquire property and renovate it, uh, through Southeast Arizona Renovation. They own the building to do the renovations, and then once their renovations are complete, um, then the building is, you know, in essence, donated to the city. Um, in, in the case of the Hillcrest, there's been a considerable amount of, uh, time and expense that's gone into, um, and, as, as Joe, uh, likes to tell the story, uh, acquiring the title to the building and then getting cleared title to the building and then paying the back, um, sewer garbage fees, which have been paid, uh, clearing up the back taxes and, and then, uh, clearing out the building. I think many of you have been through the building, uh, when it was in a much higher state of disrepair, um, and, uh, the building's been totally cleaned out at this point, and, uh, so the building's now ready to be transferred over to the city, so, um, the, uh, request from the city attorney is to approve the notice of intent, uh, to, um, to acquire the property known as the Hillcrest Apartments at one Hillcrest Drive.
All right, long time coming, and, uh, it's, uh, pretty nice that we actually have everything cleared up finally, and, uh, that's, all the back fees paid, so, uh, this is, of course, most of the tent, final will come in two weeks. Questions? Seeing now, I'll, uh, I'll move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance O dash twenty-one dash sixteen, authorizing and ratifying the acquisition of certain real property located at number one Hillcrest Drive.
Second?
A motion and a second to approve item number five. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollak.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacominno.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes six, zero, unanimous, thank you. This will be another, this will be a resolution here, we have an ordinance, this will be item number six. This is a discussion of possible approval of Resolution R dash twenty-one dash eleven, establishing a citywide workforce affordable housing initiative. establishing a citywide workforce affordable housing initiative. Again, Mr. Pollak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Um, you probably will recall that around the first of the year, uh, you adopted two resolutions, uh, that helped to establish the citywide affordable housing initiative. Uh, those two resolutions that you approved at that time, uh, were specifically for, uh, the Saginaw area and the San Jose area. Since that time, uh, we've been looking at expanding to a number of other properties that we would like to, uh, get involved in the workforce housing program, including one, uh, that, uh, is nearing completion right now in the Warren area. Uh, so what we thought would be appropriate at this time, uh, would be to rewrite those resolutions into one resolution that in essence covers the entire city. So, that way, anywhere that we find properties that could remain and sell as workforce housing would be qualified under, um, under your resolution. So, uh, all this resolution does is expand workforce housing program to the rest of the city.
All right. Making us a citywide effort. Questions?
Okay, so, again, when we're talking about affordable workforce housing, we are talking about, because I know what the previous administration said it would be and it turned out to be something completely different, so I just wanna make sure that this is workforce housing for our workforce.
Well, in a word, yes, but to explain, um, the, um, other resolutions that you've adopted have created the formula by which, um, we establish the pricing on the houses. What we are finding particularly this year with housing prices spiking as much as they have since the first of the year, that using a formula that relies on the, um, fair market value, for lack of a better term, discounted up to twenty percent, um, is not getting us where we want to be. Uh, and in fact, uh, a, a group of us, including Mr. Taylor, met this morning because, quite frankly, we have a little bit of discomfort, uh, with the appraisals or the fair market values of the houses as they're coming out and as we move forward, we will, uh, more than likely be coming back to you for, um, some changes in the policy that has been established by ordinance to allow us to, uh, price the houses in an area where we believe that it can come, be comfortably purchased by someone in our workforce.
Uh, as in city of Bisbee?
Yes. This, this by itself, what you're considering tonight won't do that. Uh, we have to change the formula by which we determine what houses are valued at.
And when can we expect that?
Probably in the next month, probably is at one of the one of the meetings.
Before the next house comes off, huh?
No, unfortunately, the, the, the one, uh, that is about to be finished, uh, has, uh, that ship has already sailed.
Okay.
Um, and the, the purchaser has been selected. And it doesn't happen to be a city employee, but it does happen to be a hospital employee. So, but that's kind of a conversation for another day.
Yeah. Take a hint on the latest one. Any questions?
I have, um, some questions and concerns. I guess my big concern is, um, the acquisition through any means available, which is open power. At this point in time, I don't have a vision of that, but what happens, you know, my concern with that verbiage that we have a situation where we've decided to retire, we have a city manager that maybe isn't, um, is prone to look at things more profitably or, you know, someone else is on council. I, I just, I just find it disturbing to take people's properties, um, as a city. And when we went through and we were doing the, um, buying up the leads, some of those people, I, that was just kind of a weird thing to me. That's one of my concerns about that. And I've had some questions from my constituents that I need to be clarified because apparently, um, there's a big misunderstanding of this out there. Um, people were asking me, they had heard that this initiative is going to prevent them from renting things like their mother-in-law houses and that the city can stop them from renting these houses because that's what they've been told, that they have to split their property now and that's the way that they'll be able to rent, but then they may not even be able to rent it because this new initiative that's coming through and the way it was explained to them is going to prevent that. So, I just need that clarified for the record.
Well, I hope that those people who have asked you that question are listening tonight.
So do I, I mean, that's why.
Because I can state unequivocally that workforce housing program is about making housing available to purchase by workforce employees. Okay? It has absolutely nothing to do with rental property, um, or short-term rentals at all. So, I, and, um, have you wondered just where that may have come from?
Or lot splits, right?
Got it. Yeah, or lot splits.
Yeah, and I, I was called by one person particular, I don't know if I should have many names, but they were questioning me about that and that was, it kind of threw me because I thought, did I miss something? So, I had to go back and read it and I asked Ms. Klein also and she was like kind of a older too. That's why I'm asking you now when it's clarified because my understanding is the city can't stop me. I mean, I have a mother-in-law's house, if I wanna rent it, obviously I have to pay the sewer, which I'm doing now and I can rent it out and I'm not gonna split my property. You have a back gate, they go into the house. And so, that was just a little odd and, and the comment, I'll touch you in a later time about that, but my, again, let's go back to my first concern is the verbiage, I guess, because my concern is that down the road, not necessarily now, but down the road, we have people that get in perish rates and we have some people living on the edge here that have these houses and they get behind in taxes and are we gonna take their house away from them? And that, that's my, my concern.
Um, the only way that I can adequately answer that and, and, and I want, I, I would like to put that to bed too.
Yeah.
Um, you had an agenda item sometime back in the spring, um, that involved, um, eminent domain on certain properties and you, you received the list. My understand, this is before I came back to work, but my understanding is that you chose not to act on that, um, resolution or ordinance, whatever it was. Um, I, my belief is that you made a policy statement by not acting on it. Um, and that's a policy that we're following right now is that we really have no interest or intent at this point to, uh, do a taking for the purpose of the workforce housing program. Believe me, there's plenty of properties out there right now. Um, and if, if you saw that, the census data that I sent you a few weeks ago, I mean, there are several hundred unoccupied dwelling units in Bisbee today. Okay? We don't have to take one because they're out there. And, uh, we have a couple of people who have, um, own, own local properties who have expressed an interest in selling or turning over title to properties, uh, to the city, all of which, of course, need some serious renovation. But I think the, the point, the point I'm making is that we don't have to do anything drastic to acquire property in order to renovate the workforce housing program. I don't see that ever being an issue, um, and, uh, probably should never be considered. Uh, but finally, uh, just as a reminder, nothing happens unless you approve it.
I have one more question, this is the teacher again. Is there a rubric that you follow that, that determines what makes this house, um, the choice? I mean, you know, is it okay, it's allocated, is there other factors that are involved with it also? A rubric is just a guideline that you follow, uh, I'm sure.
Yeah, essentially, uh, so far, a, a lot of what we're looking at renovating right now, um, has basically come to us. Okay? Um, the, uh, the, the, the house that we're finishing up right now was a, uh, USDA foreclosure. I believe the first house that, that we sold was also a USDA foreclosure. Um, they will, uh, and USDA will come to us if they have a foreclosure in Bisbee and ask us if we are interested in it. Uh, and then, of course, they have to sell it to us for a specific price. Um, and, uh, and then we have to determine whether it's worth it to buy it at the price they're offering.
So, with that, how is it determined? Um, does that fall under this or is that just something off the side of that?
Um, you know, in, in the discussion that, uh, Doug and I were having this morning with, uh, the other folks involved, um, you know, we're, uh, we sort of have been feeling our way through these first couple of houses and there's been some unintended consequences. Um, there, there's, there, there's been a few things that have happened that we didn't expect. Um, and certainly one of them was, uh, having to deal with extra long closing time, uh, depending on, uh, who's doing financing for the loans for the buyer. Um, and, uh, uh, the easiest part has been the actual renovation of the property once we have acquired title to it. So, um, so we are learning, uh, and, you know, we're, we're, we're just finishing up the second one now. I'd say this is a program that's still very much in its infancy, um, and we're gonna learn as we go along. Uh, Mr. Taylor and I are absolutely committed, uh, to keeping these houses within in a really affordable range so that a buyer, okay, because a lot of people are trying to compare it with the price of rental properties and that's really an unfair comparison, uh, because, uh, somebody can rent a place for a thousand dollars a month and three people live in it and share the rent, okay? And somebody goes to buy a house, they, they want it to be their home, they wanna raise their family in it. Um, so, uh, that's a whole different criteria, so, a thousand dollars a month is too high in many cases for someone wanting to buy to stay. And so, um, the, 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 the next couple of places that we embark upon are going to be with the, uh, ex- express intent to keep the selling price when we get to the point of selling it somewhere between, uh, eighty and certainly no less, excuse me, no more than a hundred thousand dollars.
So, will the USDA, is that what you said? Will USDA occur anyway if this doesn't? Are you, are we still available to the USDA loans?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I just wanna make a statement and then a question. Um, I'm all for this and it's a good thing the city is doing, but, uh, I just wanna make sure that we are not, uh, socializing this. For example, you said, eh, hospital employees bought this house that we just did, the city sold. And hospital employee could be a nurse, could be a doctor, I mean, and, and I, I don't know what the criteria are, maybe you can explain that to me. So, if I'm a doctor, I'm an employee of the hospital, I can come and buy this and say, well, I wanna stay here. I just wanna make sure that it's going to the right person, not someone that will buy it eventually and what guarantees do we have, what warranties do we have? That this person is gonna stay in this house and if he doesn't, not someone is just subsidizing them buying a house and for them to sell it later on. I just wanna make sure that we have enough guidelines that this is not happening, that we don't become the subsidizers of people who want to buy a house that have the abilities to do so.
That's, that, and, and, you know, that was, uh, that's been at the heart of this since day one, okay? A doctor is not considered a workforce housing applicant.
So, is there a, is there a guide, is there an amount, what he makes, what she makes?
If they are a nurse or a lab technician or a phlebotomist or something along those lines, uh, then, then those folk, those folks would be eligible.
Okay.
Uh, just like, uh, police officers, firefighters, public works employees, schoolteachers, um, uh, other support personnel who work for the school district, those folks are the people that are eligible to apply. Okay? Right now, we have no specific income guideline on it because we're looking for the occupation, okay? Because the whole purpose in the program is to put people in houses so that they can live in Bisbee and work in Bisbee and not move away for a little bit more money because they already happen to live in Douglas or Sierra Vista or someplace else. So, now, the second part of your question was basically a question, can they flip it? Well, the answer is no. Um, along with agreeing to purchase the house on the workforce housing program, once they've closed on the house, then they have to sign, what do they call it?
It's a second note and deed of trust.
Yeah.
For the equity value.
That goes into the, okay.
And, and that deed of trust tells them that they are required to live in that property for a minimum of five years and if they fail to live in that house for five years and they sell the house, then the value between what's considered the fair market value and the amount they actually pay for it is due payable to the city.
City gets that, okay.
Essentially, the equity.
Okay. Just another question. Uh, and since we're talking about this, because this is something that I, I get a lot all day being in, in my business and this is good, what the city has decided to do to go about this, uh, the affordable housing initiative. But my, my concern, is it enough? I mean, we're doing the best. Can we think outside of the box, for example? I was looking at this because, yeah, a nurse can buy the house, like you said, a professional maybe have the ability to, but is this enough doing a house or two houses every year? Is it gonna be enough to solve our, our problem? Uh, I came across a couple of cities and maybe something that we can incorporate and talk about and I know, I don't expect an answer. Uh, I know there's, uh, maybe we can go above and beyond and maybe put some requirement on the, I think the biggest issue we have now is the Airbnb. This is what's taken a lot of the homes out of the, out of the market. If we can put a mandate, a memoratorium on, on, on the, how many nights those Airbnb can be rented, maybe that will, uh, give an incentive to the, to the, to the tenant, to, to the landlord to maybe start renting versus keeping Airbnb.
We gotta stay on.
Okay, okay.
We're way getting off.
I just want to throw this in.
I know.
Yeah.
We gotta stay on the agenda item we're getting, asking a little far off.
Okay.
I have one other question. Um, you're talking about the people that qualify, you're talking about teachers, firemen. What about our, our, our hospitality people, do they qualify?
Yes.
On the bartender?
Yes.
Okay. You know, that's, I mean, that's a big concern, we got a lot of those people out there that are struggling.
Well, okay.
Anna.
So, just one last question. You know, when I asked about workforce, I asked about our, the city workforce because that's what initially we were told when this whole mess started, that that's what it was going to be for. Now, we're in, and I'm not saying that, you know, that everybody else. Maybe later on down the road, if we have, um, you know, an abundance of them or whatever, these other occupations that, that you named, you know, can, can qualify, but when we were initially sold this, it was for our city of Bisbee employee workforce. And that's not what it is.
And I am all too keenly aware because you and I have had this discussion already, um, and, um, I think that, uh, that would, that would certainly be our preference. Um, the, uh, you know, the, the, the first one, uh, I was a little bit too late coming into that game. Um, this one ended up, uh, praising, or excuse me, fair market value was a little bit too high for those of our workforce who were interested in buying. Um, we have six or eight potential properties right now that we could be working on. We are somewhat limited by, uh, available talent, uh, to work on those homes, although we're starting to work on one very quickly and another one very quickly after that. Um, I think we can do ten a year. I'd love to do more than ten a year, uh, but I think, you know, given that a lot of our workforce, uh, is step up Bisbee Nacho and we're dealing with people who are working either part-time or volunteering or are already retired. Ideally, if, if, if this thing, you know, and, and my goal next year is for ten, okay? Um, that, I, I may be a little optimistic, but my goal next year is ten. I'm hoping that other small. I'm hoping that other small contractors in Bisbee take notes. I'm hoping they will help us. Or, in the alternative, I'm hoping that they will pick up a dilapidated property, fix it up, and sell it themselves. You know, I'm gonna talk to you later about the negative impact that we're already experiencing uh, because of our lower, um, health expenses. When you have several hundred empty homes in your community, and you figure the average home will house two, three, or four people, and you restock two hundred of those homes with families, you've got your population back and more. But, you know, and for everybody who thinks it's okay to lose population, it's killing it. I'm telling you, it's killing it. And I'm gonna get into that a little bit later. So, no, Anna, if, 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 if I had my brothers, we would've done it differently on this, this next house we're gonna sell. Uh, we just can't. We have to, I think one of the things that, that we learned along the way uh, was that not only the housing spike, but it depends on where in Bisbee you select property. Uh, you know, some areas of Bisbee have greater appreciation values than others do. Um, and some have houses that are probably too large to be considered a workforce house. And so, moving forward in the next couple of houses, what we're likely to do is actually build the house ourselves on vacant lots that we've acquired, uh, so that we can hit the sweet spot on the size of the house, so that we can also hit the sweet spot on the price. So, that we learned.
Nope. Excuse me. No questions, but I just wanna make a couple of, and correct me if I'm getting offline here, uh, city manager Paulson. But, part of the, the whole situation here to me is that, as we started this program, we're building a, I hate to call it, but a slush fund. And by putting, this is not taking money out of taxpayers' dollars, we're putting it into a fund to where it will start becoming self-sustaining. So that's the whole point, that maybe these first two, you know, there's money now in the bank that we can then acquire more properties and, and slowly grow this, and, and have it self-sustaining without the taxpayers. And then when it gets large enough, then they can, we can really, you know, price them wherever we want, because there's no, there's no, no, uh, restriction. Uh, last little point I wanna make out, just to, to, to join your point, is even if we pass this tonight, it, it has that, once that sentence in there you didn't approve of, and you said, well, what happens down the road? Well, if we took it out, if something changes down the road with a new mayor or council, they just put it, they could just put it back in. So, really what we are, we're passing something that we can direct and decide how we wanna acquire these and so on. We're in complete control. And this, this is a resolution, it's not setting something in stone that, that a future mayor and council can never change. So, I'm not really worried about what's, what will happen down the road. It's one thing I've learned, is it just takes another resolution brought before, a new mayor and council, the whole thing just, you know, can, can be completely different. So, I think this is what, what we're doing now is, is moving, and we're learning as we grow in this, and, and I'm, you know, if I got a problem, I'll say it at that point. But just, at this point, we're learning and growing, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a good way to move forward to try to fill in all these empty, empty places that we have, so. All right, that's my little comment. If I'm wrong, you know. Any other? Is there any?
I move to approve resolution R dash twenty-one dash eleven, establishing a citywide workforce affordable housing initiative.
Oh, second, uh, sorry. A motion, uh, to approve resolution R dash twenty-one eleven, establishing a citywide workforce affordable housing initiative. Go ahead.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Sued.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye. Motion passes four-two.
All right. We'll move on to item number seven. Item number seven, this is a, uh, advertise the request for proposals for subject services. I'm gonna let the city manager handle this big one.
Okay, the, the subject services are architectural services?
Yeah.
Um, and the, uh, the, the, the target for the architectural services is one eighteen Arizona Street, otherwise known as City Hall. Uh, and, and I'm just gonna kind of review, because I know most people already know the sequence of events here. On October eleventh of twenty seventeen, just a tad over four years ago, a fire destroyed the Bisbee City Hall. Uh, after some input and public discussion, a request for proposals was drafted and approved by the mayor council, and were submitted for evaluation in May of twenty nineteen. No action was taken. Currently, the existing ruins that are being demolished and site prepared for construction of a replacement building. At this time, staff believes that the city should move forward with architectural plans and specs for the, for the replacement of the building. The RFP that was used previously has been modified for reissuance and is attached. Um, specifically, uh, we took the, uh, RFP that you used two years ago. We only made small modifications like dates and contact information. Uh, and then, uh, Mr. Estes reviewed, uh, the RFP, and he added, uh, two or three paragraphs, uh, of legalese to, uh, help protect the city a little bit more by, in the, in the prospect of this. So, um, what we're, uh, what this proposes to do is to be advertised, and hopefully we'll get, um, some architects, uh, to respond to it, um, under the criteria that we've established here. And the deadline, I believe, for, uh, responses is December second of this year, um, with the idea that we'll spend probably a couple of weeks reviewing those, um, um, proposals, and then bringing them to you for review and possible approval to select an architect.
Questions?
I have some.
Okay. I'm gonna start this end and work my way down.
Go ahead. Mr. Falcon, I, I take exception to some of the history, and I'd like to outline some of the things that I remember.
Sure.
As, as the process proceeded forward. Uh, there was one proposal submitted by Mr. Al Hopper, and it was discussed by the, uh, and it was actually voted on by the council. We voted to award a contract to Mr. Hopper with modifications. And those modifications were a reduction in the scope, the square footage of the building, and the project budget, which we limited to, I believe it was two million dollars. That was in two thousand nineteen, and I don't have the exact dates, but in January of two thousand twenty, Mr. Hopper withdrew from that, uh, award. He was frustrated with the indecision on the part of the council, and I can understand that. But then, on the fourth of March, Mr. Hopper submitted a revised proposal to the mayor for a single-story, level-site building with a reduced scope of eight thousand six hundred and seventy-four square feet and a budget of one point nine million dollars, which worked out to about two hundred and twenty dollars per square foot. And my concern at the time, because I kind of led the charge against that proposal, was that we were getting in over our heads in terms of scope and budget. And, uh, I think that this revised proposal that Mr. Hopper submitted, even though it was outside the window of opportunity for a contract, deserves our consideration. Because as everybody here knows, I'm against rebuilding City Hall and that existing site for the simple reason that it's a small postage stamp piece of property. Ten thousand eight hundred square feet will not easily fit on that property unless it's a two- or three-story building, which involves an elevator and all sorts of ADA requirements that make it more expensive. Now, in terms of cost, back in two thousand nineteen, we were looking at two hundred to two hundred and twenty dollars per square foot for this building. If you take any legitimate prognosticator off the internet, you can see that the cost per square foot has gone up dramatically since two thousand nineteen. An example, single-story commercial building today, three hundred and thirteen to three seventy-eight per square foot. A government-administered building, five hundred and ninety-two dollars per square foot. In the southwest, it's even higher in other regions of the country. We need to look carefully at these costs. The scope and the budget amount are what the contractor will use to determine his fees for designing the building, and we will be on the hook for a budget that could quickly run out of control based on the fact there are unforeseen conditions at the site. We're talking about retaining the portico. That is degraded concrete. All engineering reports indicate that it's degraded. The steel has been damaged by heat. There's no way to determine the structural integrity of that portico. To ask an architect or an engineer to attach a ten thousand square-foot building to a substandard piece of concrete is not ethically or professionally wise to do. And that's why some of the contractors in Tucson refuse to bid this project for design. They, they're not used to being told, this is what you have to design. Their professional license says, we have, you have to defer to us to the most adequate structural design. So, those are concerns that I have. Building on that site, the budget, square footage, and the fact that there are unforeseen conditions that will probably drive the cost up closer to the high figures that I mentioned.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so, um, I, I'm not sure I'm gonna be able to get them all, and is this microphone working?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I actually had a contractor reestimate the cost, uh, and the cost went up twenty-five dollars per foot. So, I'm gonna say that I might be on the low side, but I'm gonna say you are definitely on the high side. So, and let me finish, okay? I gave you time. So, um, now, the proof is gonna be in the pudding, because it's not gonna be known what we're gonna pay until we actually business project. So, um, now, as to your concerns about a couple of the other matters, okay? So I spent eight years of my life in that building. Um, some of you spent more. And, uh, we all know that it was a three-story building, and that it was on a sixty-by-ninety-foot footprint. And we know that there was plenty of room surrounding the building, not only for the required setbacks, but for parking along the site and the rear of the building, with plenty of grassy space in front, and of course, more street parking, uh, especially after we did Arizona Street. So, the request in this RFP is for a two-story building, okay? So, we've reduced the size of the building by one-third, okay? We moved what used to be three or four employees from the basement area, and then they move into those two remaining stories. After I left for Winslow, uh, four more employees moved in from another building into that building. And by the time all these people, uh, did what they were doing, they pretty much filled up that building. So, ten thousand eight hundred square feet is sixty by ninety times two, okay? No magic, okay? That's the existing footprint of the building, okay? Now, fire damage, okay? I agree with you, I read the, I read the report. So, what we did is we hired a structural engineer. He came to see us two, three weeks ago. And he determined that there was no significant fire damage to the part of the building that we wanna save. Basically, the front entry went, okay? Uh, and, um, so, and he gave us, uh, his assurance that the foundation underneath was, was capable of sustaining not only what we wished to remain of the building, but, um, uh, that that it could be built on too. So, we have already, uh, as part of the demo, we've already cut away the porch from the rest of the building, so it's now sitting there independent of the rest of the building, uh, which will be demolished in a week. So, um, I, I am sharing with you what I am aware of as far as what the community is telling me, not just since I've been working here, but during the period of time I have lived here and have been a private citizen. And most of the folks who have interfaced with me, particularly since we started talking about rebuilding City Hall, was that if we can save any part of that building, we would like to see it, stay where it is and look like it there. And so, um, I'm not saying that's the majority, I'm just saying, those are the people who care to share their, um, share their opinions with me, uh, and certainly, uh, the thoughts of the people in Warren, uh, who have been looking at that burned-out hope for four years without doing anything about it. And so, um, this is, and, and yes, personally, this is my preference too, okay? I, I mean, I think everybody knows that. But if it were just my preference, I would be sitting here requesting the service. Now, as far as the architects are concerned, this is going out to architects everywhere, okay? We may get one response, we may get two, we may get three, and we may get done, okay? There's no guarantee, just since we're putting it out there, the sun's coming back. So, um, assuming we get more than one, we will have to evaluate between the two. So anything that a prior submittal or submitter had to say about yet, at this point, in my opinion, isn't material. We're starting over from scratch. And so, hopefully we'll get several good architects that will wanna talk to us about this building, because as you know, uh, it's, it's not about who's giving us the best price, it's about who has the best ability to do the job for us. And, and, you know, that's articulated in the request. So, um, you know, uh, I don't expect the, because I know that, uh, you know, prices that architects charge don't tend to vary significantly from one architect to another. And so I don't expect prices to vary widely either. So, you will, you will be determining that based on their experience, their ability to do this kind of building, and, uh, uh, and their desire to do something for the community. So, I think those were all of your, all of your remarks.
That's a, that's a good answer. Nothing that you said alleviates my concerns. They're still valid, they're still there. And I'm aware of that, and I'll be the first one to apologize to you if I'm wrong. But my experience tells me, look at the high side. Always look at the high side when you have unforeseen conditions. And believe me, you have unforeseen conditions on that side. So, those are my concerns, they're, they're there, they're legitimate. And I think this whole issue deserves a lot more consideration than twenty minutes at a council meeting on Tennessee United. And I would suggest that we table the issue and have a work session where we can get some more concrete information, more substantial information at the table before we make a decision. We're talking anywhere up from three to six million dollars here. And if you finance that, you're looking at another seventy-five percent on top of that. And that is a big expense, and it deserves some careful consideration before we go after a vanity project, rebuilding an old building on a bad site.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one more comment. And I was, I was gonna save this for later, but, uh, you have a bunch of city employees who have moved three times in the last four years, and they just wanna go home, and they don't consider this a vanity project.
That's the motion that you're appealing.
These, these are, these are your folks.
That's a motion, that's twelve people in a ten thousand square-foot building, eleven thousand. That's emotion. That's twelve people in a ten-thousand-square-foot building, eleven thousand.
Well, not quite.
Okay, so, I'm gonna come on down the line, just, I'll make my comments later. Go ahead, go ahead.
First off, Ashley, did you notice that they're commenting that they can't hear us?
Speak into the mic.
Yes. Um, first off, I wanna clarify again, 'cause I want clarification. You are planning on expanding in the excess. I mean, that was part of it. Not just staying in the footprint of the old building, but utilizing the whole space of the lot when you go back in to rebuild, right? Is that what you're saying?
No, what, what we're calling for is the same footprint of the existing buildings.
Secondly, I wanna go on the record to state that I find it highly irritating that there is this push to take City Hall on Ward Two. City Hall has been Ward Two for a very long time, and it doesn't really belong in any other wards. And there are quite a few people in Ward Two that feel that way. And you talk about it being a vanity project, what is the project down the road that you wanna put, what's the difference? You'd say that we're acting on emotion. Well, heck yeah. People want the building back, they want it rebuilt. And they don't necessarily, maybe a handful of people, want it stuck down the road on, what was it, Washington or Harris? City Hall has been in Ward Two. City Hall should stay in Ward Two. And the way in which they have described it, it should be affordable to build. And I, I just find it just a little insulting that there is this push to take away from our ward more and more when our ward has already suffered enough loss.
All right, thank you for that. Anna?
Well, Mr. Pollak's recollection of this whole process is way different than mine. But I would like to thank Mr. Estes for adding warning to the project that, or to the proposal that protects the city. It's, it's nice to actually have an attorney that is looking out for the best interests of the city. And Mr. Pollak, I'd like to thank you for moving forward with this project so that our employees can move back to our permanent home. They deserve it. They've been through a lot. And, you know, they, they need their, their permanent home, and, and that's where it should be. But you asked me to call it a vanity project.
Would you like me to repeat it?
How dare you?
I'd be happy to repeat it.
Oh, I'm sure you would be. I'm sure you would be.
Okay, thanks for that, and we'll move on to...
Well, after all this, I don't know if I can...
Sure.
No, when I was interviewed for this position, I said I'm in favor of getting the building where it is in Ward Two, and I'm all for keeping it because that's part of history and part of that area. At the same time, I don't want to discount some of the, about the cost issue that Rue brought up. You know, we just, we just need to, because being in the private, being in business, being, we just wanna make sure that we are careful about the cost, the associate cost, and we plan for this. That would be my only comment, Steve, that take that into consideration because the cost of building, of building materials has gone up dramatically. So, this would be my concern as someone in charge of, we're supposed to protect the funding, the budgeting, the money for the city. So, I'm all for the, and you've heard me many times tell you this. I think it's part of the culture, part of the tradition of Ward Two. But we need to also make sure that we look at the cost and be realistic about it. That would be my comment.
And if I could, Mayor.
Yeah, sure.
You know, what we're asking tonight is for you to hire an architect to design a building. We're not asking you to build one. So, if, once you get a design, the design is good, okay? And if it can't be done now, and it could be done here for now, then we do it here for now. And yes, I, I think everybody's aware that the materials prices have skyrocketed. But I'm also confident that at some point, I don't know what it is, if I did, I wouldn't be working here. They'll probably moderate to a point where we can come back in, in, in line with the money that we have. So, so, you know, you're not committing to build anything tonight, so...
So, that will come back in front of us, how much it costs, and we'll have to approve that.
You bet.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
You bet.
All right, Leslie.
I think it's all been said.
Oh, never.
Even me, no question.
But, you know, I'm supportive of keeping City Hall on that site, and I think it is an emotional decision. But I think in a community like this, it's okay to make those sometimes because we have a very strong feeling of community, and City Hall has been part of that for a long time. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. I'll take my two minutes. I also do my research, and I actually talked to two major construction contractors, one from out of state, one in state. Said, "What is the difference between an eight-thousand-square-foot single-story and a ten-thousand-square-foot two-story?" And they said, "Your two-story's gonna come in cheaper every single time with an elevator." You bet. An elevator's a hundred grand. By the time you add in all of your footings, you stretch out all of your AC, they said, "All the extended amount of electrical." By stacking things on top, you save a ton of money because you still, you have less roof. Roofs are super expensive and all the other things. So, they alleviated my fears about, my fear about, oh, how bad is it gonna be for a two-story? They both confirmed to me that a two-story will actually come in cheaper than building a one-story. Size-wise, not, you know, that's different. I mean, you can't really compare an eight-foot to a ten-thousand-foot, like a ten-thousand-square-foot. But, but still, if you're gonna build the same size, two-story's coming in cheaper. Outside of that one, part of my reason I ran for mayor is 'cause I was really tired of kicking cans down the road and down the road and down the road. And one of the first things I did when, when City Manager Pollak came into, into being with us, that I said, "Where are you on City Hall?" He says, "We, I wanna go." I said, "So do I." So, he and I had many discussions about this, and I didn't have to push him, he's been pushing me. But, yeah, this, this is something our, not only do our employees deserve, but our citizens deserve. And it isn't just something that... Our citizens need something more than City Hall. They, we can use it for so many of our boards and commissions and, and other public meetings. And if we do it right and, and, and do it correctly, it will serve us for the next, I'm hoping, over a hundred years. So, so, I think this is a good chance for this, this, I know it's emotional and, and rightly so. Everybody should express their emotions because if you don't, then you don't, you don't get it out on the table. But let's, you know, I think the majority here will, will, I'm hoping, will agree to this because we're just going out to find this architect. Then we're gonna have to bear that down and see what they say. And, and when they come up with some sort of plan, to also have come up with some, some money. And we'll have many, many more discussions, and we'll probably have several work sessions. But this is just going out to find an architect. This isn't deciding what we're building here. So, that's why I'm in favor of moving forward on this tonight and, and, and going out and finding an architect. And then we'll have some work sessions and a lot of stuff once we get, get some stuff in front of us that we actually, I think, we can discuss with concrete evidence with us, so... Anyway, that's where I am. I said my little piece too, so I will, I will entertain a motion, I'll make it myself.
I move to direct the city staff to seek proposals for the design of a replacement City Hall building at one eighteen Arizona Street in East Bay.
I second. Hey, I have a motion in a second. Direct city staff to seek proposals for design of a replacement for City Hall at one eighteen Arizona Street. Roll call.
Councilmember Pollak?
Nay.
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes by one. All right. Now we get on to the non-cryptic, next one in line. Let's try and keep it a little light. Sorry, I gotta go down. Number eight. This is a discussion of possible recommendations on the performance evaluation of Steven Pollak, the city manager. Signed a letter that gave him the option of either having it in public or in executive session. And of course, he was more than happy to, as he always said, in public. So, I'm gonna let him have the floor, and I will, again, I'll start and have him work this way.
Oh, great.
So, be prepared, my friend.
Oh, God.
Anyway. See, I get a laugh once I win. That's my goal here. Anyways, Steve, go ahead. You're, you've got the floor for a minute, if you'd like. I appreciate it.
Okay, it might be more than one.
And again, thank you, and good evening again, everyone. With your agenda packet, I supplied you with a memo of some three pages that sort of hits some of the highlights and some of the lowlights of the last six months. As you know, my contract is typical of business contracts for city manager where after the first six months, a performance evaluation is, is given. And I found out several years ago that not only was it better public policy to have the city manager's evaluation done publicly, but I also found out just from feedback from folks who either came to or lost the meeting that it was appreciated that we could sit behind closed doors to evaluate how the city manager has been doing her or his job. I, I think, you know, I, I did it a couple of times before I moved on to my job in Winslow. And then during the years I was in Winslow, I did it every single year that I was there at all. And, and it was appreciated there as well, so, so I'm very happy to, to be able to do this. So, anyway, I just wanted to, you know, state a few things here. And I told the mayor, I'll just hit the highlights, but I usually end up talking about the whole thing anyway. But I, but I think we should take some time because evaluation of the city manager's performance is really an evaluation of the city. It's an evaluation of our staff, it's an evaluation of how we make our decisions, and it's an evaluation of where we are today and where we want to go moving forward, so... And since we've actually talked about a couple of these items in prior agenda items, that will, I'll be shorting it just a little bit as well. So, anyway, one of the things that I found when I returned in April is that we did have some relationship problems with, with some of the community groups that we work with, notably the Friends of Bizby Animal Shelter and the Farmer's Market. I, I can, I can report with fairly good confidence that our relationship with the animal shelter has improved. I, I think that I can describe our working relationship as cordial and cooperative, as may well be noticed by what happened a couple of weeks ago up on Wokey Avenue with some feral cats. That took the, the, the work of a lot of different agencies, including the Friends. And, and I have the deepest appreciation for the work that they've been doing because they not only helped get them out of there, but they have a hold under law for a period of time. So, so, having those relationships, being positive and cooperative works really well when you need somebody badly. But it's also nice to have all the rest of the time, and so, and so we are. You know, the relationship with the Farmer's Market unfortunately didn't work out as we had hoped. The mayor and I met with the previous operator a couple of times. And we did, we did talk about various alternatives that didn't necessarily follow the city's ordinance in terms of what the costs were over there, but we were willing to listen to alternatives that we could bring to council in order to keep that group working at the Farmer's Market. And they elected to stay where they are, so that's fine. In the meantime, we did have a couple of other groups work, come forward. As, as you know, particularly those of you who live down in that neighborhood, that we have for over a month now been operating what we call the Saturday Market. It's growing in all kinds of things. Every, every week, there's, there's more people showing up, there's more vendors showing up. We hope that will continue for a while so that we can fill the park up and, and have, and renew that very important relationship, particularly with our neighbors in Warren, because those are the people that I heard the loudest when Market left the Vista because it was, it was, you know, kinda like their post office. It was their place to gather, it was their place to see their friends, it was the place to get their produce, and so on. So, it's, it's, it's important to the fiber of our community that we do that, and so we found a way. And even though, I mean, I wish the former operator all the success in the world where she's operating now, and I hope she does. You know, now we've got more choices than we ever had, and that's a good thing for our community. So, that's relationship. Budget preparation, I don't have a lot to say about that at this point. You finished three months of the fiscal year, you just got your financial report for September thirtieth. If you remove the amount that we received in July through the American Rescue Act from our revenues and our expenditures, we're about at break-even at this point in the year. I, I wanna be careful moving through the rest of the year not to become too dependent on that eight-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand-dollar infusion to use that as a barometer for how well we're doing because that's not the barometer for how well we're doing. And so, we're, we take that out, we look at what we are through the first three months of the year, and we're essentially at break-even, which is as good as we hope to be in the first quarter of the year, especially since some of our larger revenue producers like property taxes don't start coming in until later in the year. So, so we're doing fine in that respect. As I requested when I came back to work and you agreed to, we have brought a city planner on board. You're all acquainted with Doug Taylor by now. The only thing that Doug doesn't have that the rest of us have is an office at City Hall. He has a place up at the Queen Mine Tour that the other Doug, Doug Grandham, has graciously allowed him to use until such time as we can move into a facility with enough room to accommodate him. And, and it's actually, I think, worked pretty well so far. And so, you know, Doug is in CS two or three times every day, and he's out in the field working every day. And I think by the time the end of the fiscal year comes around, I think we're gonna all agree that this was a really, really important move for us and is gonna help us in so many ways in terms of planning, in terms of zoning, in, in terms of growth, in terms of working with residents, working with builders, working with developers. We just didn't have a central point for that, and haven't had for nearly ten years. And so, this is really gonna be, I predict, by the end of the year, we're gonna wonder how we all live without it. So, anyway, thank you for hearing me when I asked for that, and, and I don't think you will be disappointed. You know, I, I, I mentioned the highlights and the lowlights, and we have had some lowlights. It's unfortunate, but you can't get away with it forever. Things happen, and we have to deal with them. Excuse me. We did have an incident in the fire department of sexual harassment, the results of which have been thoroughly documented both by us and in the news media. And we also lost our deputy police chief due to an incident which occurred in Phoenix area and forced him to resign. Even though I, I would prefer, and I know you would prefer, that those things not happen. You know, they do. I think what I, I'm hoping what we, what we have gotten out of this is that we found a problem... a problem, reacted on it immediately, we took decisive action, we solved the problem and we did it completely, we did it quickly and we did it transparently. And that's all that we can offer and that's all that the, the, the folks, the people at Bisbee can hope for us to do. Yeah, there's a handful of people who thought we did the wrong thing, but I can assure you that everything we did was correct and that we'll be all better for it as, as a result of these situations being resolved in the manner which they were done. So and then, you know, on, on another note, but not, not a bad note, we're also, at the end of the week, we're losing Mr. Harrow. Mr. Harrow has been offered a great opportunity doing the same kind of work much closer to his home in Casa Grande. And all, all I can do at this point is say, you know, thanks for what you've done for us for the last two and a half years. And it's a great opportunity and he's a young man with his, his whole career ahead of him and I certainly don't want to stop anybody from taking advantage of a better opportunity when one comes along. So, so, and I think he may have a word or two to say about that later on in the meeting as well. But we're gonna miss him, but this is gonna give us an opportunity to go out there and find another excellent engineering type, doesn't have to be an engineer, but an engineering type, that can, can, can lead us forward into the future with the many projects that we're, that we're working on. This is one that's near and dear to my heart and, and I think hasn't, only because its significance is catastrophic and we have a chance to fix it. We had a chance to fix it for a couple of years now and we haven't done anything. We're gonna do it now. We are now sitting on a $22 million plus unfunded liability on our police and fire pensions. Okay? One pension is 10% funded, the other pension is 5% funded. Okay? Later on this year, maybe next month, I'm going to start, I'm hoping to hold a work session and bring in our financial advisors and some staff from PSPRS to talk with you about the predicament that we're in. I, I know I've characterized it before with you in conversations, like having your credit card maxed out and only making the minimum payment. Okay? So you got $10,000 on your credit card and you're paying 25 bucks a month. What do you think is gonna happen? Okay? What's happening to us right now and it's gonna continue to get worse? Right now, our liability, total liability annually is a million and a half dollars. 20 years down the road, for the same liability, we're gonna be paying two and a half million dollars a year. That's if we do nothing. Okay? I want you to think for the next few months about the consequences of doing nothing. Okay? Now, I was hoping, because I'm an optimist, that we could refinance our unfunded liability, maybe lower that payment a little bit, but not when you're 5% funded. Okay? Basically, what we're hoping to do is put together a refinance package where we can hold the line on what we're now paying and then amortize it over the next 27 or 28 or 29 years, however long it takes to pay off. Because keeping in mind that even though you're refinancing your debt, you still have to pay your current expense, okay? You still have, you still have those payments for your police and fire pension fund that are current. So you've gotta add that into the mix. Plus, you've also got your tier three employees, which are included in this, which is a growing number because anybody hired in 2017 or be honest, in tier three, they don't count on this. And, and of course, you have your, your pension fund for the rest of us. So this is a really, really serious matter. And I think that I'm, I'm telling you about this now, not because it's something we've done, but because it's something we have done. And I know I've had conversations with some of you about this even prior to my return because, you know, our stats just don't look at enter any worse on a daily basis. So, so we're gonna work on that. We're gonna work on it before the end of the year, but in order to do the refinancing, we have to do that in conjunction with next year's budget. So when we actually have action to take, that's gonna be more along the lines of Mayor Judy next year. Workforce housing, I think we've discussed that pretty thoroughly tonight and I don't wanna, I don't wanna bore you with any more on that, except to say that we're up to, and this is not workforce housing, but it is the Hillcrest, so it's kind of workforce renting. The, the number of interested potential affordable developers has risen to three. We have been talking with one of them fairly often over the last couple of months. A couple more have recently entered the picture. And so if one of them goes ahead and pulls the trigger and asks to buy a building, then we should be, hopefully if that happens soon, we'll be able to set a public auction up so we can auction off the building. Building's best rate is $600,000. You know, the auction process will determine whether or not we get 600,000 or we get more. Those are total unknowns at this point, but there are people who do this kind of thing to allow people to be able to rent something at a rate that, you know, that we talked about earlier with the Affordable Housing Program, because there is a need for rental units as well. So hopefully this can be a catalyst somewhere in the future, moving in that direction. So City Hall building, we've beaten that one to death. I won't go any further with that one tonight. Just, just, just know that it's, it's been on radar for about six months. The, this is, I have it in two places tonight, I'll speak about it now. The fuel management system, that fuel management system that I told you we were, we were gonna put in budget and we were going to have working by July the 1st, well, it started working a few days ago. One of the side effects that we've been coping with in marketplace has been supply chain disruption and that's part of what we encountered in this. We had everything ready to go and we were just waiting for a couple of parts to show up and they finally did last year. So with Public Works employees and the help of one of our local electrical contractors, everything is together, it is working, the software has been installed. There's a dashboard that you can look at and you can see from minute to minute what's happening with that system. Each employee who's authorized to pump fuel has a little fob on their keyring and that's what activates the machine. It has the data on it that, that tells us who's doing it and what, what vehicle they're doing it with. And all they have to do is put in the, that's the only thing they have to do. I was watching over Matt's shoulder this morning how it works and it's kind of cool. But the, the most important thing, in addition to being cool, is that it is totally transparent. Okay? Now, how much money will we save? I, I don't know. I mentioned a couple of months ago, I thought it would be around $5,000 a month. Something tripped my trigger this morning on my way to work. I saw a city vehicle at a, at a gas station. I will not mention what the vehicle was or who the driver was. Fueling with diesel. Got 269 now. Okay? We just filled our diesel tank. Now that, that probably works, okay? Diesel, 298. That vehicle pumped 30 gallons of fuel this morning at 71 cents a gallon more than he should have. And of course, my first question when we got to work was, have you told those people yet? And yes, everybody's been told, but we'll have it's thy heart, so now we're cutting off the cards. So next time, if anybody, if anybody tries doing that on Thursday, they're gonna end up paying for that one with their own credit card. So anyway, if we can maintain those kind of price gaps, okay? And, and I'm not saying it's always gonna be 70 cents because just for fun, I stopped at the next gas station up, which is Bisbee Beverage, and they're selling the, the diesel fuel on there pumping 247, or excuse me, 347, I'm sorry. Yeah, we wish. So, but there's still a considerable gap between 347 and 298, okay? So it was $8,000, very well spent and we should get our money back in less than two months with that fuel system. So, so anyway, that's a decision you made early on when I came back that I think we'll be paying dividends well, well into the future. And then, of course, we're still in, in, in other fueling efforts. We are still working on the electric vehicle stationed up on Tombstone Canyon. We've had some changes, we're gonna bring some changes to you probably at the next meeting or two. And, but we're still gonna get the four stations, we just had to change the way we do things a little bit unfortunately. Either we didn't understand or EPS didn't tell us exactly what needed to be done. So now we're doing it. We'll, we'll get back to you with that more information later. The mayor has a thick packet of things he has to read before I can, before I can send the information back. So other than that, you know, we're still dealing with Bisbee Bike Ways. I know that the, the two projects, Bike Ways has gone quiet for the moment, mostly because those are under review right now, not by us. But since it is, both the master plan as well as the lavender pit bike way have a immediate impact on Freeport McMoRan, they of course want an opportunity to redo it and so that's where it is right now. Once, once Freeport gets done with their review, they're gonna forward everything to MSHA for the purpose of making sure that their records don't show any, well, for lack of a better word, traps near any of the proposed bike ways that, that are in the plan. So any hole in the ground is probably known by them before anybody else, if it's not the color. So anyway, we are still working on that and it's gonna, you know, that's gonna be a little while, yeah. And of course, the process of raising the money and so forth is still all ahead of us at this point. And then I, I do want to mention the issue with the feral cats again because I think it needs to be emphasized that there's practically nothing we can't do when we work together as a group. We found out that the process of removing feral cats from someone's residence is a lot more complicated than we first thought. The police chief and building inspectors met with a local judge three times before we finally had permission to remove the animals. Okay? They had to get two court orders to finally get in the building and then a third court order once they documented the presence of the feral cats to remove them. So that process took an entire week. And so no easy task, but I wanna tip my hat to, to Joe Ward, our doug inspector, to a number of our police officers, including the chief. We had two animal control officers from Cochise County who assisted us in the removal along with the Friends of Bisbee Animal Shelter and probably some other folks that I'm forgetting at this point. And so unfortunately, because the law says they have to be held because of evidence, there was a tentative hold put on which is about to expire and then we can deal with the cats however they need to be, to be, to be dealt with. So and then please keep in mind that while we're, we're talking about cats here, there were numerous deficiencies in that dwelling unit that were also discovered along the way. And Joe is in the process of documenting the violations so that they can be fixed before the owner of the property can return to the premises to live. So and then I just, this is, I'm gonna call this the no good deed goes unpunished department. All of you are aware that the Ceilings Motorhome, Mobile Home Park is closing at the end of the month. Along the way, you know, even though three quarters or seven eighths of that park is outside city limits, they're part of our community. So we're, we've been doing what we can to provide them with the assistance they need to either relocate or be able to get some money to live on while they may be in transition. And to that end, we've been dealing with CGO, with the county housing authority, the CCAP. Councilor Pollock has been of considerable assistance. Pauline has been of considerable assistance in, in helping get that information to residents of Mobile Home Park so that they know what their rights are and they know what they can do. So, so because no deed goes unpunished, you saw in the Observer, or in a somewhat mild review from the owner of the Mobile Home Parks who says, "I'm wrong." So, well, okay, Mr. Ceiling, I was wrong, but not completely. But you were completely right. So if you or your friends are listening, just know this. The whole process could have been done much differently than it was. And because it wasn't done differently, a whole lot of us had to get involved that it might not have any other way. So I think it's important to realize that, yeah, everybody has their rights, but sometimes your rights infringe and totally inconvenience and hurt very much for your 50 other people so that you can have your rights. And so that's why we're involved. Now, I think the extent of our involvement is pretty much over at this point, but you know, we'll still do what we can if we, if we can do anything. And, but I think it's, it's, this was a good exercise for us because it shows, I think, that we are a community. We didn't draw a line at city limits and say, "No, we're not helping you." You know, maybe people like what we did, maybe they didn't, but, but we did have it and I think that's important. I think that's what we are, that's what Bisbee is. And I, and I think that we, we'll do it again if we have to, whether the owner likes it or not. So there you go. That's your no good deed goes unpunished anecdote for today. So anyway, that's about all I have. I know I've forgotten something, but you know, just please know that, well, I'm, for most days, I'm happy to be back. The, you know, there's, there's, there's a lot to do. There are some things upon which we will agree and some things upon which we will disagree. That's why we have a mayor and council so that you guys can vote. And, and thank God, at least in this community, majority wins, even though some other communities may not believe that. I think that that says something about us. And, and I think that all those folks who work for us every day, toiling in the vineyards, working out on the streets, cutting the weeds, you know, all the hundreds of things that we do every day without fail and without comment and, and many times without recognition. You know, there's one thing I've learned in 37 years in this business is that those are the people I appreciate the most because they get the job done for the people of Bisbee. And so I do want to end tonight without a tip of the hat to our fine city employee groups and, and hope that we can, that we can do more for them as the future unfolds. So anything, anyway, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. And I just say I appreciate the last six months and I look forward to doing more things in the future. and I look forward to doing more things in the future.
Thank you for that. So, part of this evaluation is comments from council. Guess what, Leslie, I said, uh, it's right to left this time, to the left, right.
Okay. Um, honestly, feedback for you, Steve, I don't have anything bad to say at this juncture. I really appreciated going through budget season with you, and I feel like it was easier than it's been with other city managers. And, uh, I really, you know, tip of my hat to you for resolving the animal shelter situation and the feral cat problems becau- or, you know, repairing our relationship with them and then doing something about that issue in my ward because it had been an issue for a really long time. And I just wanna say that I appreciate your transparency, I think you're very supportive of the employees, and I like that a lot. Um, you're always upfront with us, we can always get ahold of you, you're very responsive when we need you or have a concern, and that is very much appreciated. And you keep us informed, your city manager reports are great, and, um, and I like how you interact with the community. I like that you're on Facebook interacting with people, and I like that, you know, I see you out and about and I just, I think it's, I think you're doing a great job overall, and I'm dreading your retirement.
We're not going there yet.
Okay. We're not gonna retire for a long time.
Thanks for that, Leslie, uh, go ahead, Mel.
Also, Steve, I'd like to, uh, thank you for the job you're doing, but I have a couple of questions, and I want to know, state it first on the, uh, you talk about the liability, the unfunded liability. Now, we're six months into the budget, you said this is a major issue for us that we have to deal with. My question is, why is it taking us so long? It's, uh, it's like, it's, why, I mean, the way I understand it, you are the city manager, you are the CEO, you are the person that's supposed to come to us, you're, you're supposed to manage the resources and find ways to, 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 uh, to fix the budgets, to find ways, new ways of revenue. I mean, telling us this is great, but what are you doing about it? What's your plan for this? To say, "Oh, by the end of the year," it's, it's too late, it's too far from now. So, when you're saying, "Well, we have this issue, we have this problem," and you're telling us, I mean, my, I, my, my expectation is for us, for you to come and tell us what you're gonna do about it. With all due respect, all the other stuff, with the cats, with the, you know, with the farmers market, I think the biggest issue facing is this deficit. And you've said it today, you mentioned it to me before, and, uh, your job as a city manager is to come up with solutions, not to report, to tell us the problem, but to, to also come up with a way to, to do this. That's what you get paid for, that's what I assume, anyway.
Okay, Mel, uh, with all due respect.
Yes.
Okay, you've only been here a couple of months.
That's fine.
Okay, we've been talking about this forever.
Okay.
Okay, I was, in fact, I was having conversations with my ward councilman and with my mayor-elect when I was a private citizen, asking them what they were gonna do about it, because I was a private citizen. I knew the problem existed, but I wasn't working for the city.
But you've been here six months now.
And, okay, let me finish.
Okay.
Okay, we talked about this unfunded liability the day before I started working here again, okay? And within a month and a half of my returning to work on April fifteenth, I'd already had one meeting with our financial advisor, and we laid out what the, what the issues were and what we had to do. And the problem at the time was, it's not a problem, it's, it's a logistical issue. I, we can't do this until we, we have to do it in conjunction with passage of a budget, okay? Well, when I got back on April fifteenth, the budget was all but done, okay? So, that gave us time and, and, and ability to work out the logistics of what we're going to have to do. And I think it was two weeks ago, maybe three weeks ago, um, the mayor and the finance director and myself, uh, met with, uh, the, um, financial advisor and, and his team on a Zoom meeting to start piecing together the process of what we're going to do, okay? Uh, we're going to meet with them again.
Thursday.
This Thursday. Uh, and hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll be closer to cobbling together a plan. But a- at the same time, they were getting more information, uh, from Carrie about the state of our finances. Please don't use the word deficit in conjunction with this, this is not a deficit, this is an unfunded liability.
Right, I use unfunded, uh, liabilities, I say liability.
No, you, you, you said deficit, but I just, I want, I want, I know you know, but I want the people who are listening to be clear on what this is, okay? So, um, I, I reject the notion that I've been here six months and haven't acted. I have been here six months and I have acted as fast as I can humanly do it because a lot needs to be done and it has to be done at a certain time. And it will be done at that certain time. You are probably gonna be doing a work session before the end of the year where you're gonna be getting everything laid out for you. And by the time we start cobbling together the budget in January, February of next year, Carrie's gonna have the parameters under which she needs to start putting the numbers in the budget so that you can consider dealing with the issue once and for all.
No, I appreciate that you're bringing this up, and my other question, Steve.
I brought it up because nobody else did.
Okay, and I'll keep bringing it up. Okay, uh, you mentioned here, even though we adopted a spending plan that proposed spending, this is the budget that you, you are part of or partly part of, spending substantially in excess of our revenue. Why would you, as a city manager, not say, "Well, we cannot do this, why, why would we?" Like I said, you are the CEO, and you, uh, that's the way I see it, and we are the board of directors here, and you're supposed to guide us. You're supposed to say, "Well, this is what I believe because this is what we pay you to do." I mean, not just to, you know, not, you know, not, we're just not accounting, we're not just, uh, you know, pencil, you know, just, uh, uh, put the numbers, or jotting the numbers down. Am I, am I, at least is the way I understand it, you're supposed to be managing these resources and guiding us through this. Some, some of us may not have the, the financial back, background to maybe to know about those things.
Okay, so, what we don't wanna do is we don't wanna confuse the budget document with management of money.
But you go, you go hand, enhance.
And, what we also wanna understand is that, um, we prepare for the worst and we hope for the best.
Exactly, that's true.
And so, in order to prepare for the worst, sometimes you have to budget, not spend, but budget, more money than you anticipate receiving, but never more money than you have.
But that's not what this says.
Well, okay, so, maybe I stated that awkwardly, but, you know, uh, Mel, this isn't the first time we've talked about this, and you know, I, I explained to you several times how the process works.
I know how it works, Steve, but you, you decided to do this in open, uh, and, 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 you know, I, and you sent this letter, I appreciate it, except for this budget issue. The other things, I mean, I would expect the city manager to be doing those things, uh, with all due respect, you know? Uh, but here, it's a lot of stories. My biggest, uh, issue and the city faces, and we're facing, our kids facing, our grandkids facing, is this deficit that you'll have to pay for it sooner or later. I mean, sooner or later, if not, and, and by your own, you tell us this and you write it, and I, I appreciate you saying this is something that has to be talked about, but why wasn't it, why haven't we started, I mean, six months, we could, we could have done some, some work on this.
Well, I think I already reported to you once tonight that after three months of the fiscal year, we are at break-even. I said that tonight.
Yeah, we're at break-even, we had some departments that made budgets, some did not. I mean, I, I, last time, I did not vote on this, I won't say on that, so you know. Okay, that's all I have.
Mel, let me, let me just say this. You're not the first one, okay? Sometimes people just have a philosophical difference with the way, with the way we budget. The proof is what happens through the year.
Okay.
The proof is what happens when you get to the end of the year and you see what we've done. And you get a financial statement every single month, and you can tell exactly where we are. Management of the budget is a fifty-two week a year proposition, okay? We want to be able to have the authority to spend money on things when we need them, okay? And, uh, and, and I know that you like a more precise document, um, but I can't guarantee you that, you know, uh, we had a councilman here four, five, six years ago, every year we had the same argument. Uh, every year he wanted me to balance the budget without using reserves. Remember that?
Yes.
In fact, um, we went back and forth about three years in a row, so on the third year, um, I said, you know, I said, first of all, and, and it, it was not a suggestion, it was a, it was a demand. Am I right about that? Uh, the demand with, with, you know, a lot of anger behind it. And so I said, "Well, then, I think we should vote on it." Because I don't work for you as an individual, I work for the mayor and council as a body. And so, if the mayor and council votes to budget without the use of reserves, then that's my authority. And so we did. And we didn't vote to draft a budget without using reserves. Now, this is budget number ten for me, ten, ten here in Disney, budget number thirty-six or thirty-seven, in the course of my career. I just, you know, I just wanna plainly state it for the record that, um, there was one year out of those ten budgets where we actually used reserves. And it was, I forget, twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars in contingency in the depths of the recession. Other than that, we have managed our money well enough, not only to, to, uh, end up with surplus at the end of the year, every single year except that one, but we've also had during the period, that period of time, um, an annual audit, most of the time which was completely clean. And so not only have we managed our money well, but the checking balance on us through the auditing process, that's, as you know, I'm an independent auditor, who works for you and not for me, has given us a clean bill of health. So, I mean, until council is a body directs the staff to budget some other way, what we need to do is we need to budget in a fashion which we can make sure that we have the money that we need if we need, but not spend it when we don't.
Steve, that wasn't, I think you're, you've gone off, uh,
No, no, exactly.
No, Steve, I wasn't talking about sometime, uh, you, you miss budget, uh, sometimes you come below budget, I'm not, I'm not talking about. I'm talking about the issue that we have, the unfunded liability that we're talking about. And we need to address this, that's, that's my question, and haven't, or why haven't we addressed it? And you're saying, "Well, when we do the budget," my question, this, you are on the budget of, uh, on the, this budget, this year's budget, why that wasn't addressed, why wasn't that included, why wasn't that talked about? So, at least we, we can start, uh, working on this, that's my question. I'm not talking about coming a little below, a little above budget, that's not the issue.
It was simply impossible to do what we have to do to refinance the unfunded liability in the amount of time that we had from April fifteenth till June thirtieth. Impossible, okay? Um, but, okay, so, Mr. Pollak will remember, and then mayor-elect Budge will remember, a year ago last summer, when they were standing out of my driveway, not at the same time, but standing out of my driveway, and I was telling them, "Look at, look at what Flagstaff did to alleviate its unfunded liability, we need to do this." Okay? I'm just gonna say that it didn't get done, and I don't really care who's responsible for it. I knew it was a problem when I got back and I started working on it right away. Mel, I can't be any more plain about the steps I've taken because that twenty-two million dollars is a noose around our neck. And up until six months ago, there wasn't a whole lot of effort put into solving the problem because we could just pay another million and a half dollars and we'll wait for one more year.
Thank you, Steve, thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Just, oh, no, just for some history, Mel, from the mayor here. When I took office, it was one of my prime thought processes, I went to the, the current city manager. Says, "We need to look at this and look at bonding, look what Flagstaff has done." Says, "No way, we're not going there, that's not what I wanna do." So, immediately,
Thank you, this is good.
So, immediately, I mean, we had all of five days to finish the budget that came before us. Then, honestly, we've both been working on it since then. The thing that's taken more time than anything is we have to go to the Utah, I'm sorry, I keep wanting to say Utah State Retirement because that's where I work, to the Arizona retirement system to get the figures.
Yeah.
And they, they take forever to get all those to our financial people, and when we were on the conference call just two weeks ago, it was with people in Chicago, the ones that have done this across the country. So, there is, there is progress, and it's, and it's step by step, but, but that, that's kind of the history of some of the things that happened and, and, and honestly, just rest assured, it's in my little report that I'm gonna read, but just, just, that's, just wanted to clear up the, some of the timeline, so.
Thank, thank you, Chris.
Go ahead, yeah.
Well, first of all, I agree with everything that Leslie said, so she kinda took a lot of that, um, but, you know, I, I cannot tell you how nice it is to actually have a professional city manager again. It's been a very long time, um, what it used. But, uh, you have had to tackle some serious issues from day one, and you've, you've done it. You've been very transparent about it, and for that, I'm, you know, I'm very, very grateful. And one of the best things that you did was hire a planner for community development. You know, all those years ago when Dave Smith and Adrian Bedon thought, "We'll just do away with that position." It, it's been really hard, and it's, it's been a needed position, and so, I mean, I'm, I'm thrilled. And, um, and I understand that, you know, he's been hitting the, the streets from day one as well and working very hard, and, and I'm very grateful for that. It's also nice to have a real evaluation because it's been a very long time since we've had that. And this is the first report that we have had during an evaluation from a city manager since you gave us the last one so many years ago. We know exactly what's going on, we know what you're working on, the highs and lows. You know, a lot just put, you know, the good stuff, the, the highs. No, you, you faced, you know, the really tough things that, that we've had to face as a city. And it's not pleasant, but, but you've done it, and we are better for it, um, even though it was extremely hard. But, um, I don't know, I, it's just like a sigh of relief that, you know, I, I kinda feel for the first time in a very long time that, that the city is heading in the right direction, that we are riding the ship. You know, I don't feel like we're sinking anymore, and before I, I was very concerned that we were. It, it doesn't happen overnight, and, and I know that, you know, Mel is, is very new to the process, um.
Well, he, uh, man, he just told us, "We have twenty million dollars, you're sailing the ship." He just told us about the financial situation, and here you are sailing the ship. He, he's telling us how bad the situation is.
But you have to understand, Mel.
So, you can just use it, Mel is a new.
You have to understand that this is, that this is unfunded liability that has been there for a long time. It hasn't been addressed, um, and it doesn't matter, we are responsible for that unfunded liability. This is the first time that we're actually looking at it, and that we actually have a city manager that is trying to, um, come up with a solution. And, and yes, I have the, uh, historical knowledge on it.
I know, I know.
I've been here a, a little while.
And, what, what we're saying, I mean, all the stuff are great.
You're not arguing.
Okay.
No, this is, this is mine.
Okay.
This is mine.
No, she mentioned my name, she said, "Mel, I have to..." She said, Mel, I have to respond.
No, you don't. Sorry, sir.
But.
He recognized.
Anyway, I do appreciate everything that you've done. I appreciate you taking the time. And, you know, not everybody understands that, you know, government takes time. But you're chipping away at, at things that have been left undone for a very long time. So like I said, for that, I thank you. I look forward to, you know, going on. And like Leslie said, she's, you know, not going to be happy when you retire. I don't think we should let you retire for a very long time. But I do, one of the things, one of the other things aside from our planner and community development is the fact that you're moving forward on City Hall. It's been far too long. And again, that was a, you know, a difficult situation. And, you know, we're, we're moving forward now. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just very pleased. And again, pleased with actually having an evaluation here where we can pass and discuss, if you will, you know. And, and the fact that you're doing it in public proves that you are very transparent in how you do business. And so for that, thank you.
You know, I am ordering handcuffs. Johnny?
No, you're not.
That's why you can't leave.
We're buddies.
No, no, I meant to keep your head.
So I would like to thank you for getting the arterial spending bleeding in control. It was a continual issue. It's a budget, doesn't mean that we have the money. And that was the continual response. Just because you have checks doesn't mean you write them if you don't have money to cover it. And since you've come in and with the, I guess, sense on it, it has made a difference. And I appreciate you stepping up and doing that. I do appreciate you also stepping up with the PSPRS, which I think you would say. Because when I first came on council, I was asking about that. And I just kept getting blown off about, oh, there's nothing we can do. Oh, you know, until everybody yells for bells, blah, blah, blah. It was the same old, same old. The fact that you found the information, what was going on with Flagstaff, and stepped forward to start to implement that, I really appreciate that because that is our albatross. I want to learn about. I also appreciate the fact that you've worked with the second farmer's market that's been coming, that's come back to the Vista, something that was a well-led infusion into Ward Two. I think both farmer's markets are great. And I think everybody should try to visit both. By being from Ward Two, really do appreciate the fact that that market is there and it's doing great. As Leslie stated, I appreciate the fact that you have a working relationship that's positive in front of the animal shelter. They took a lot of heat before. And people will tend to argue about that maybe, but they do a lot of good things for our community. And they sometimes do it without me thanks. I also appreciate the fact that you've stepped up and gone back to the fuel system that we're not going to start using. I kept spending a few under control because that was outrageous. I appreciate how you handled the situation in the fire department. It wasn't an in-house investigation. You went out, I was going to say out of house, and brought in someone else with no ties and an open perspective so that there would be a clear and impartial investigation. And for that, I really appreciate that because I can't necessarily say that I remember that always happening. I really appreciate the moving forward of the City Hall and how it's going, especially for Ward Two. And I'm looking forward to seeing that go to fruition. And I guess lastly, I'm glad the city stepped up with Ceilings. That's kind of broken my heart because Ceilings used to be my grandparents' favorite home when I was a kid. And the fact that what has happened up there is just really depressing because at one time that used to be a important housing. And for those people that have kind of had the road ripped up from under my one city and you have stepped up and really helped them. But otherwise, thanks for everything you've done.
Thanks.
Thank you. Lou?
I want to talk to the qualities that I've seen in you that I appreciate the most. You're intelligent. You're experienced. You're thoughtful. You are compassionate with the staff. And you're the consummate politician and I can learn things from you. You can take a punch and you can give back as good as you get and still be friends the next day. I really appreciate that a lot from you. It's been a pleasure to be a council member with you as a city manager. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I really should have started instead of ending, but if everything's been said. But I'm just one of those giving mayors, you know. The way I evaluated all of my career when I was here before, when I was a council member is I always wrote it out and I submitted it. I had submitted it to the clerk. Steve has copy, of course. And I'll just quickly read through this. I will, I do want to say I actually wrote this before I read his letter because it looks like I stole from him, but. No, really, I, oh my God, I'm impressed.
Sure, sure.
No, I did. I had my wife. Did this help me go, no. Played with all the bad words in all the last week. So let me just get through this and we'll move on because we have a few more things to do. So to, as mayor, I took some 10 months ago. As mayor, I took office some 10 months ago with city manager Paulson being hired six months ago on April 14th, 2021. I understand that changing to a new city manager right after a newly elected mayor and council is difficult for employees and the public. However, I'm pleased with the transition and the current overall condition of our city. City manager Paulson, with only days before a new city budget needed to be presented, took on his new leadership position, presenting a well-thought-out budget while balancing competing viewpoints from the council, department heads, and the public. This was no small task and takes an experienced leader like Steve to step up and get the job done. Our city has faced many challenges in these past six months, from personnel issues to budget concerns. Steve has handled them with professional, deliberate thought and has taken appropriate action as needed. On March 14th, our finance director distributed a June year-end estimated spreadsheet showing a possible $757,305 deficit in expenses over revenue at year-end. But under Steve's leadership, the previous administration's lack of budgeting was turned around to less than $80,000. Is what it looks like we're going to be short from last year. That's a big turnaround from the $757,000. I believe this is what Steve's 40-plus years of experience brings to our city. With this experience, I feel we can meet the many challenges ahead, including building a new City Hall, hiring new personnel, formulating several large public works projects, and managing housing issues with sustainable growth. Lastly, we must deal with the PSPRS funding cliff that is threatening the viability of our fair city. Without action, our city's future is in dire straits. I know the city manager Paulson is working on that issue and many others. My charge is for him to give guidance to the mayor and council on the best way forward. Even with reduced staff, our city departments are providing commendable service and I want to thank them for their hard work and dedication. And our city will continue to offer our residents and guests a quality place to live or visit and services that are superior to other small towns during these difficult times. I credit Steve, who has allocated our limited resources, provided our employees with leadership and guidance by taking directives from the council to accomplish these goals. I believe evaluation of city manager Paulson is also an evaluation of the mayor and council. Steve cannot provide our employees with his leadership and guidance if we are not engaged and involved in the city's future. As the governing body over the city of Disney, we must come prepared to give clear guidance and have concise expectations. This is why I commend Steve's call for a strategic planning session soon and will look forward to his guidance through that process. In closing, I just want to let us remember that public service is the mechanism for transmitting such inspiration from leaders to citizens. I am glad we have a leader in city manager Paulson who also believes in public service. I support his continued employment and the increase in his compensation as stipulated in his current contract. Respectfully submitted 10 budgetary. With that, we will jump into item nine. In fact, we got to get through three funding things from Chief Charley. Right?
We do, but, excuse me.
Yes, you've got some final comments?
No, no. Well, yeah, but I think we need to acknowledge what the contract stipulates so that the public knows what it is.
Yeah.
So, and if you want to do it, fine.
No, go ahead.
Okay. My employment agreement with the city, which was agreed on April 14th, stipulated that I would work for the first six months at an annualized salary of $88,000 a year. And it also stipulated that performance evaluation, which has just been completed, would be done after six months. And assuming that it was a successful evaluation, which usually I determine by whether or not I come to work tomorrow or not, that the contract stipulates that my salary will be increased to $100,000 a year. Okay? Now, I just want to put that in perspective, okay? Because, you know, $100,000 is a lot of money, okay? Acknowledge that. But I want to do some comparison with the last couple of city managers that you've had. And what the last couple of city managers have made is well in excess of what I'm asking for, both in terms of salary and in terms of benefits. And I mentioned this before, I don't take healthcare benefits except for the dental, which is a huge savings per month for the city. I'm on social security, okay? I have health insurance. I don't need the city's health insurance. You know, I, the last city manager's salary was, I think, $114,000. If I'm looking back at my HR director.
$112.
$112, okay, sorry. I stand corrected, $112. And the one before that was similar or more than what the last one was. So I believe that there's value in this position. And so I, and because for eight years you contributed to my state pension, okay? I believe that you should be given credit for the value of what you contributed to my state pension. So I believe that because I'm getting that pension that you helped to finance, that $100,000 is more than fair salary for my services and the value that hopefully we will receive moving forward. So I believe since it was agreed to in a contract and has already been worked upon, I don't think we have to do that yet. But one thing I can assure you is that I'll be around for a little while longer. I won't ask for more money. Okay? You know, that's just, that's, that's my commitment to you all. Not because I want to keep the price down or not because I'm trying to save money, but because, you know, I'm part of this community and I've been for a very long time. You've treated me well. And I appreciate that and I want to acknowledge that. Find treatment moving forward. But just rest assured that when the time comes and you have to hire another city manager, you're going to have to negotiate a little different.
Better be the budget.
We'll have 4,900 people in this town, so.
I have it.
I have to add that one.
So anyway, I just wanted, in the interest of transparency, I wanted everybody listening to know that's what our agreement is.
Yeah.
So that's all I have.
I didn't want to put the numbers in, but I wanted to mention that at the bottom.
I think it's important. It's a public salary, it's public money.
All right. I'm not going to ask many dollars. We're just going to move forward. Item nine, discussion of possible approval of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $55,000 for a police package vehicle. Chief, boy, I'm tired. Chief of Police.
Evening, mayor and council. Before you, it was one of three grants that we've been awarded by the Governor's Office of Highway Safety. This past year, we tried to participate in some of their, the DUI Task Force specifically is the vehicle that the numbers we produce from that is what helps us with these grants. And we have some officers, our staff has finally got to a level where we have some officers that have been able to go out and, and perform these traffic patrols to assist in making our highway safer. We put in for this grant, Officer, excuse me, Sergeant Ten Cox has been taking the helm for this, this particular project. And we were successfully awarded $55,000 to outfit one police vehicle with everything we need, which should include the tracks equipment that I came to for a few weeks ago. This will include the cost for this vehicle as well. So it'll be fully outfitted with graphics with lights, sirens, cage, and random vehicle in the amount of $55,000. If we can find somebody to build one.
What are you asking? What are you offering? What can we get?
Originally, the intent was for a toll, but I don't know, we'll never find money in time to spend that money before it's due. So we might be looking towards a, towards a half-ton truck or even a, another sedan. But some, some, they're going to pay us for, to put another police car on the street. So I definitely think it's beneficial.
All right, I like this one.
Yes, sir. So this is all grants, by the way?
Yes.
So nothing comes out of your budget, so it's all free?
No, it's free money, but.
Any other questions? All right, I'm going to have that motion's made because I got to do a lot of scrolling here. A lot of paperwork. Let me make a motion.
I move to approve a Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $55,000 for a police package vehicle.
I'll second that. We have a motion to second. Who approves a grant in the matter in an amount of $55,000 for a police package vehicle? Real call, please.
Councilmember Pollak?
Aye.
Councilmember Giacomo?
Aye.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember Suede?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Klein?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye. Motion passes. And 26-0. Moving on to item 10, this is next grant. This will be discussion of possible approval of the Governor's Office of Highway Safety grant in the amount of $19,262 for personal, personnel services and related materials that applies to include radars, whatever, 10-meter screen signs with mounts to enhance DUI adherence driving enforcement.
Again, mayor and council, this is part of that same package. We were awarded three grants. This is the second one. This covers partially for equipment, but also for overtime so that officers can participate in those DUI Task Force events specifically on the major holidays, like New Year's Eve, Super Bowl Sunday, Fourth of July, things like that. It affords us the ability to deploy those without costing the city budget funds for that overtime. But it also affords us the opportunity to purchase some equipment like radars, 10 meters. ten meters, PBTs, portable breath tests, things of that nature that we are in need of. So, that is, again, something we're very happy that they were sharing some funds with us again, and the car was nice, and it just makes it a little sweeter, so.
Same thing, is it all funded, set up, it's not out of your budget, right?
When you say, when it says speed signs with mounts, speeds, what kind of, speed limits?
I think, I think there's a wide variety of things. Initially, the thought was in, for the grant was for radar, vehicle radars for the cars when they're mounts. That might have been a typographical error on my part.
Actually, Mayor, I believe we have to let people know when we're doing a DUI task force.
Right.
So, that includes sense.
Oh, on the side of the road.
So, you'll have signs?
Yeah, it says DUI.
DUI.
So, typically in Coaches County, we don't, we don't do checkpoints. Typically, what, like recently, I requested the DUI task force deploy here for the Los Lobos concert. So, they sent, I think we had four DPS officers and three service police, PD police officers that were here in Bisbee working, and it's high-traffic enforcement is what it's looking for, specifically targeting DUIs, aggressive driving, unsafe driving, things of that nature. I believe that night we had four DUI arrests. So, in a perfect world, we would have none, but because we had those additional resources here, our two officers would have been quickly overwhelmed and probably wouldn't have gotten the second two DUIs, so having those additional resources, we were able to get those drivers off the street, so. The hope, though, is for portable breath tests. We're currently working on DPS's old stuff that they gave us when they got new a couple of years back, so we're hoping to get some updated equipment, also the ten meters, and then, again, like I said, the radars, but also that's, covers some overtime in that as well.
I just have one question. When you say ten meters, are those devices that you use to see how dark the window is tinted?
They are.
Okay.
Your cop cars are trouble.
I, I have an issue with ten meters because I know there's a legal requirement for tent in Arizona and probably all forty-nine other states as well. But practically every new vehicle we have acquired for the city since I've been here and a couple before have to be tinted too heavily to meet the law. I cannot look through the driver's window and see a person. So, I'm just wondering how consistently this law needs to be applied, and I know from listening to other people's experiences being stopped by the highway patrol and other entities that if they can't get up for anything else, they can always get them on a tent. I'm not sure that's a task I want to take on.
I will be more than willing to remove ten meters off of the.
We could buy something else.
Yes, for sure.
Like speed signs.
You can see me in all my cars.
I want those speed limit signs, yeah, okay. Let's move on. I get a motion unless there's any questions, okay?
I move.
Go ahead.
I move to approve a governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-two for personnel services and related materials to include radars, maybe ten meters, speed signs with mount to enhance DUI slash impaired driving enforcement.
I have a motion and a second to approve item number ten. Have a vote, please.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, six zero. Number eleven, number eleven item, this is discussion of possible approval of the governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twelve thousand for personnel services and related materials and supplies to enhance, that's eleven, I'm so sorry.
You're right, you're on number eleven.
Yeah, oh, I am on one of them.
Yep.
I read before.
Similar.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Ten o'clock yet? Yeah, I'm sorry. Let me start over. Item number eleven. This is a discussion of possible approval of the governor's, governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for personnel services and related materials and supplies to enhance DUI impaired driving enforcement. Go ahead, and we'll get through this one, too.
All right, this is another, and I apologize again, Officer, Sergeant Cox is the administrator for this. I don't understand why we got one for nineteen two sixty-two and one for twelve, but we got an additional twelve thousand dollars for both overtime and supplies. The supplies on this one is much lower than it was for the first one. But again, it's, the whole purpose of this is to continue to help provide us with the tools needed to enforce traffic laws, reduce DUIs, reduce accidents and fatalities on our highways and streets.
Any questions?
I mean, are there requirements? I mean, what's the difference between the two? The other one for equipment, this one for, I mean, it seems like.
They're both, they both cover some equipment. They're broke down. If you look on the second page, they're both broke down for the amount of equipment and supplies can be purchased under each one and how much overtime is available on each one. I think if I remember correctly now, as I'm refreshing my memory, I think one was specifically directed towards aggressive driving and the other was specifically directed towards DUI enforcement. But ultimately, they're, they're one and the same almost, you know, it's all, it's all dangerous and all needs to be done. If we were doing a aggressive driver detail, we wouldn't not stop somebody for DUI or vice versa, so.
I guess Steve will be happy with this. He'll be saving some money on this. See Steve working for you.
That's why we build it in.
Yeah.
Any other, motion, please?
I move to approve a governor's office of highway safety grant in the amount of twelve thousand dollars for personnel services and related materials and supplies to enhance DUI slash impaired driving enforcement.
I second.
Motion and a second. This will be for the approval of agenda item number eleven. Rule calls.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede. Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, six zero. Moving on to number twelve. This will be discussion of possible approval to allow mayor and council to go into an agreement pursuant to ARS forty-eight dash five seventy-two between the Arizona Department of Transportation and the City of Bisbee Police Department requesting authorization to access connectivity to the Arizona Department of Transportation database.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is an agreement. This is part of the tracks. My hope is the third and final agenda item I have to bring before you for tracks. I thought the last one would be it, but unfortunately, there was one more. This is, this is to allow the information sharing between the Bisbee Police Department and Department of Transportation with the data that's collected from the tracks. So, it will benefit both us as a data, giving us access to the data that's collected overall, but also will go into the ADOT database for reporting purposes. But this is, there's no cost to this, and it is, it's just the agreement allowing us to share that information back and forth.
Any questions on sharing? Ah, reading them.
Think they get worn down.
Give me one more motion, somebody, and we'll get this to bed.
You want, okay. I move to allow the mayor, allow mayor and council to go into an agreement pursuant to ARS forty-eight five seventy-two between the state of Arizona through, through the AZ Department of Transportation and the City of Bisbee Police Department requesting authorization to access connectivity to the Arizona Department of Transportation database.
Motion and a second for agenda item number twelve. Rule call.
Councilmember Pollock.
Aye.
Councilmember Giacamino.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Suede.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Aye, motion passes, six zero. You're back. Item thirteen, report from city manager.
I was hoping for nothing, but there's two items, all right? And this is in the not such good news department. This afternoon, the league sent out a revised shared revenue estimate based on the changes in population that just came out with the new census. Now, before I give you specific numbers, I don't know how many times over the years and even last year I had conversations with people who wondered why it matters if they're counted. Okay? Well, I'm gonna tell you why. This is just one good reason, but there's a lot more. The state of Arizona has revised our state shared revenues for the general fund by eighty-eight thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars based on a reduction in population of three hundred and two. In the HERF, which of course is not in the general fund, there, the hit is thirty-three thousand one forty-six. So, losing three hundred and two people in the census count just lost us a hundred and ten thousand dollars in state shared revenues. And as we know, it's based entirely on population and the available funds. And of course, the state has been flush with cash for the last two fiscal years. And I know that, you know, we've, we've got a history of fifty years of reduction in population with every single census. I don't recall the last time that we actually lost revenue, but they definitely, they reduced, we can provide you with copies of this if you want.
Can you email them?
Or, we can email it to you, sure. More than half the cities in the state lost money. I mean, they really took it to us this time around. They've got more revenue and they're giving less of it out.
Will this affect next years?
Certainly will.
Not next year?
Moving forward, yes, for the next ten years.
For the next ten years?
Right, for the next census, right. They do population estimates every year, but the population estimates start with the count. And our count went down to three hundred and two people, so. Now, I know we didn't lose three hundred and two people, but convincing some folks to spend five minutes to fill out a census form is a lot to ask. And this is just part of it. I mean, there's a lot of other state and federal revenues that are impacted by the census figures. And this works out to about three hundred dollars per person in reduction. But with all the state, federal revenue opportunities that there are, it could be two thousand dollars per person that we would see. But as our population drops, if it's still two thousand dollars, it's minus three hundred and two people, so it's times three hundred. It's a serious matter. You know, we talked earlier about a lot of things, one of those being workforce housing program. This is one way to combat that. You know, more houses that we can acquire and renovate and get back out there, get people in them. You know, three, a population of three hundred, that's probably.
Centuries?
Hundred to hundred and fifty homes. When you figure the average size of family, which, you know, for, because the largest share of our population is us old folks. The household size is generally true. So, so, you know, so we will be making the appropriate reductions. So, we lost a hundred and ten thousand dollars worth of spending power today with that, and so everything flows from that.
How would this affect the schools? It has nothing to do with us?
I, I really can't say. I don't know.
It's not on the agenda, so.
Yeah, I'm just, just of the.
I know.
But either way, either way, I don't have an answer.
You don't have an answer?
That's all. Now, I just have one more thing. Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Mr. Harrow has asked for a moment of your time before you adjourn.
Yeah, and I was asking you personally, coverage himself, but anyways.
There he is.
I'm gonna let him speak first.
Thank you, Mr. Pollock. As Mr. Pollock mentioned earlier tonight, I have submitted my letter of resignation as the Director of Public Works. I wanted to take a moment to give thanks for my time being able to serve the city of Bisbee. First, I want to thank Mr. Stephen Pollock for giving me the opportunity and the support he gave me. I want to thank Mr. Saucy Coleman for her support. Additionally, I want to, I want to thank Mayor Ken Budge and Mayor David Smith for their support and leadership. Additionally, I want to thank all the city council members for their support and dedication to the city of Bisbee. Cannot leave without thanking our Public Works staff for their hard work and dedication to the city of Bisbee. I'm sure the city council is aware, but I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that the Public Works staff all worked in the office and in the field, meeting with residents, processing permits, collecting garbage and recycling, maintaining streets, parks, the Evergreen Cemetery, city of Bisbee facilities, the fleet and sewer systems during COVID-nineteen pandemic. They did not get to work from home. They all did so without any questions because we worked to serve the citizens of Bisbee. For that, I am grateful. I absolutely have to thank my beautiful wife, Margie, my three daughters, Madison, Eliana, Olivia. They all had to sacrifice a little bit of me in order for me to be able to serve the city of Bisbee. My wife also messaged me and asked me to say on her behalf that she and my daughters are forever grateful for the opportunities you have given us as a family. Finally, I absolutely want to thank the people of Bisbee. You all are full of character and passion. Stay involved in your community, support the city staff, and know that your character and passion with the city of Bisbee is what makes Bisbee great. Thank you for allowing me to serve the city of Bisbee.
Thank you for giving those two and a half years?
Yes.
Yep, and I only got to experience ten months of it, but you've got the toughest job, I think, next to arresting people, I know, and the city, I swear, putting out fires. I mean, everybody does, but the Public Works directors, the brunt of the, of the, lot of the criticism, and it takes, makes a lot of work, so I do appreciate it myself, so. I hope I express it for all of the council. All right, since my deterrent person's not here. I move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, if anybody was saying aye.
Aye.
If all of them aye.
Thought you'd know.
So, we are adjourned.